The speaker for the session we have amongst us Dr. Veerajyoti Deh, who is Assistant Vice President, Multi Commodity Exchange, MCX Mumbai. He has more than twenty-five years of experience in the Indian financial market. Formerly he was associated with NABAD for more than ten years. He is an alumnus of Delhi School of Economics and I am thank God. And is presently holding major responsibilities at MCX, including the monitoring and coordination of economic research and policy advocacy on commodity derivatives markets in India. We welcome you sir, on this occasion I request you to kindly come over on the stage. I request Bhagwan sir to give his opening remarks and then we can begin the session with the presentation.
Friends, the post-war session is a little difficult, but I think this is a very important subject. And we have in our midst, the producers today, who worked in our world and done of course now for a long time. And MCX almost entirely handles the commodity markets. So yeah, I think that's what is very important to even our supply and demand through the MC kind of thing. And having a biased story in the process and giving comfort to the participants in terms of if they want to do, how to do. Yeah, there are precious commodities like gold, silver etcetera, which are also handled by the transport. Apart from them, major props are also part of this kind of system. I am sure you will find his lecture very interesting because many of you are involved into agriculture field and other field and even in the finance of the business very interesting. Only thing is that from my part of view, I have to catch up your flight. So that imposes some kind of a time limit to him. I have told him, I think in any case we will like to wing it up latest by two forty-five. And we should leave some time for the audience to raise some question. So I will say that you take about thirty minutes and complete your thing and that we can take one or two few questions. Now the audience and platform.
Thank you, thank you for this interruption and thank you for this opportunity to stand before this audience and talk about something that is very close to my heart particularly. And also to tell people and make people aware of certain things that we normally don't speak about. Because I am coming from a market, a marketplace where you know you always look at profits and commercial gains and so on. We don't talk about much of, let's say not always we talk about iron places about research agendas. The thing that I am talking about is the research agenda because I just want to give a little background about what I am talking and why I am talking. Is that if I just take a little, go back a little bit into history and that you know for some of you who may not be aware about. If the market had, the commodity derivatives market in India had a brilliant past. It grew phenomenally, but I am talking of the pre-independence period. Particularly in the period eighteen seventy-five to nineteen forty-seven. Eighteen seventy-five was when the first commodity derivatives exchange was set up in India. And of course it grew, you know, by heats and lows and there was a big vibrant trading in the market. And then post forty-seven there was a lot of restrictions in my view in all of this. But since two thousand three, when the government allowed electronic multi-commodity exchanges to come up in India, this market has been started to grow. Now, why I am telling all of this is that we believe that one of the reasons, one of the things that will make this market grow is creation and dissemination of knowledge. And with that agenda in mind, with that objective in mind, I would want this audience, the research scholars particularly, to look at this market and some of facets of this market for considering research. That is my goal soon, agenda for today to tell you about. Now derivatives, what are derivatives, you all know derivatives are financial instruments whose price is derived and therefore the name derivatives have come from, derived from another asset and that other asset is called the underlying asset of the underlying. So you have something like gold derivatives, the underlying is gold or you can have wheat derivatives or rice derivatives, the underlying is wheat or rice and so on and so forth. But the point over here that we need to understand is that, I mean it's kind of known to all of us, but we don't realize it very often is that we are talking of two different market segments. On one side we have the physical markets and the mirror image of which is the derivatives market. And these two markets, or these two market segments actually need to work parallely, need to work efficiently and need to be intertwined with each other very, very efficiently for both these markets to grow and for the economic benefits that can come about from these markets to be calculated to the people who are using these markets and they are using the instruments of these markets. So as you can see the physical markets, you know, they are on the left side. It involves buying and selling of commodities and the primary function is to enable the derivative commodity. So something, sometimes, in fact, a lot of times commodities like potatoes and onions going to short supply the price of sugar and then we say the markets are inefficient and so on. We all know that. The mirrored image of this is the derivative market. And because of the derivative market, it takes price cues from the physical market and it is very closely intertwined with this. So like not many people realize that when, when they say or when they read about the international price of food oil. You know, people, when somebody asks about the international price of food oil, it's kind of general knowledge now, everybody, the man on the street also knows. It is seventy dollars, it is international price, okay, seventy dollars a gallon. Very few people realize that this market, this price is actually an exchange traded price. It is traded on some commodity exchange in the world and that is taken as a price reference for everybody who is using that price for some kind of negotiation whether or not that person is actually participating in the derivative market or not. So in that way, even physical markets, so physical market is taking price cues from the derivative market and derivative market of course, when it forms the price, when it sets the price, it takes price references closely from the physical market. So these two price, these two markets are, let me put it this way, need to be closely interdependent and intertwined. To the extent it is not, there is a problem and efforts should be made to make them more intertwined. And that is the way for better rights of more efficient price discovery to take place. Now, if we talk about the functions and other aspects of the commodity derivatives, mainly there are two aspects, one is price discovery and risk management. So this market exists, if I were to name two things, just two things, it is only for these two elements. And it is in fact for these two elements only that the government of India, whether the government of India, the governments across several countries, in particular the developing countries, are not only allowing commodity derivatives to come up in their respective jurisdictions, but also promoting and encouraging them. So that is the reason why we say that these two functions, as you can imagine, price discovery is a very, very important function in the context of commodities. I mean, I need not tell you, this audience, this audience is already aware of how price formation is, for example, agricultural commodities in a country like India is extremely okay. In many places you will find it, the price formation is actually a function of the relative bargaining strength between the buyer and the seller. If the buyer who's, let's say, I mean I am not time casting, but let us say buyer is a big aradhyak and the seller is a small farmer, then inevitably the right price is not, I mean something the price of that which transaction takes place is usually below that right price. And if it's the opposite, of course it is above what is supposed to be the right price. But for God's sake, we need to know what is the right price and we need to know, not only know what is the right price, we need to disseminate what is the right price. And therefore this element of price discovery on an exchange comes because this exchange is a place where there are thousands of people on the buyer, buyer seller side coming and calculating and forming a price in a very transparent manner, in a very well related manner and not just discovering but also disseminating, in many cases, you know, on a real-time basis. And that is how the markets have become over time a little more efficient. Not because of anything, but because of the fact that these prices are known now to everybody, the extreme traded prices. And on that basis, the people even who are not trading on these markets, but who are in the physical market are able to take a price reference from a source that they trust. So that's how price discovery is very important for, particularly for agricultural commodities in developing countries like India. And then there are this, this element of price risk management. All of you are aware that there is this huge element of uncertainty or volatility in commodity prices. Whether we are talking of small farmers who today are not aware when they sow a crop, what the price is going to be when they harvest it or it is a huge kabbabi like, let's say Saudi oven cook, who today is making investment and doesn't know six months later what the, you know, price will be and whether that investment that it is making is actually going to, you know, is going to pay in the long run. Because the price in six months is something, you know, totally a black box, one doesn't know what the price is going to be. And that is why risk management or, you know, in more specific terms, if I could say hedging is extremely important. And this market allows the person who are participating or hedging in this market to lock in a price today. And that lock-in, locked-in price of today will remain the effective price till the time this person is in the market. We are not giving to the nitty-gritty of this market because I am not even come to what I wanted to talk about the research agendas. The other element of this market is that it's an investable asset class. You can actually put your money over here and you treat it like an investable asset class because this, this element of commodities, they have certain unique qualities such as diversification, such as being inflation-proof and these benefits that traditional asset classes do not provide. So this is another way of looking at the markets beyond these two, first two essential elements. And of course, there is this entire ecosystem around commodity derivatives market. What do you mean by this ecosystem? I mean, for example, the warehousing system for an efficient commodity market you need to have, you need to provide for delivery. And for delivery, you need to have an efficient warehousing system, logistics system, transportation, whatever. And then of course the payment system that goes along with it. So in the process, an entire ecosystem is necessary to be created in order to support the function of the commodity derivatives market. And therefore, if we are talking of this market, we are also talking of the ecosystem around this market. When we talk of the growth of this market, we are talking of the growth of this ecosystem also. So now coming to the research agendas, you know, what we have in mind. What we have in mind is a lot of things to understand and appreciate about this market and particularly with two aims in view. One is, and while I say, when I am saying this, research is not my idea and what we have observed, what I have observed over time in this market, being in this, in this market for close to twelve years, that these are the areas that we think, you know, if there is more research, then a lot of research opportunities, because very few people do research in commodity markets and there is a, possibly there is an utter, you know, dire need for doing research and finding out more about this. But also, as I said earlier, that, you know, a lot of information, a lot of knowledge that would come out from this research would drive the future growth of this market, that is our forward. Also in this one, another element of this agenda, one by one I am going to list out, is that we, a lot of times look at the histories and the development paradigm of the other geographies, other, other exchanges, particularly the developed countries and see what all they have done, they have given them a lot of, you know, they have, they have deeped a lot of dividends because of the fact that they have done certain things or they have suffered because they have done certain things or not done certain things. So those are things that we want to know, learn about and try and see if we could implement in our markets also and if we did, what is the scope of and what are the likely impacts of those. So with this, you know, some of the things that the audience who could hear, the research scholars and other people who are sitting over here, they can think about is, you know, the first thing is working and deepening and growing in the market, you know, the participation. In this market is marked by gradual and progressive, you know, promise, foundation given by the regulator for participating. For example, the financial institutions, as late as two thousand nineteen, mutual funds were not allowed, early two thousand nineteen mutual funds were not allowed. A lot of financial institutions are not allowed to participate. Two thousand nineteen onwards, mutual funds, alternative investment funds and a host of other financial institutions are being allowed. What has been the impact of their participation? Has it actually led to deepening of the market? Has it taken the market to the people who otherwise were not able to participate? And also one very important element is the biggest, you know, financial institution, category of financial institution, namely banks. Even as I am talking to you, banks are not permitted to participate in the commodity derivatives. Now, is there a reason for it? We don't know, we need to find out. Or is the market losing out because banks are not participating, we don't know. Hedging, hedging culture, when hedging of course, as I told earlier, is managing the price risks because you are able to lock in. Now this, when I am particularly emphasizing about culture is because when you look at other countries and gradually our hedging culture had developed in the, particularly in the corporate sector, not so much in the small and medium enterprises. That kind of culture is not found so much in India, why? Is, I mean people act rationally, we would love to think that actually the corporate sector would act rationally. So why is the corporate sector in India not hedging as much as their counterparts in other countries are doing? So that is something that we want to know. The products are the scope for innovation, right now SEBI is the market regulator, which is the market regulator, which has permitted ninety-one commodities in which futures and options can be launched. However, we don't have many products in the Indian markets today. Are there reasons for experimenting with certain products which the Indian exchanges have not done so far? Or, you know, one should concentrate with a few products and see how further depending in these very products can be done because these are the Indian products and others are not really ones that matter. We don't know, we need to know. Yeah, similarly, you know, index, index is a new thing in the Indian market. In the commodity derivative market, index is a very, very new feature. As most, many of you may be aware, in the capital markets, Nifty and Sensex are extremely, extremely popular among the investing population. That has not been seen in the commodity index. So is there something wrong with the design? Is there something wrong with the very nature of the commodity index? Because underlying our futures as against in Nifty and Sensex, we need to know this. Understanding what makes, you know, contracts success, succeed or fail. Then the policies, and that's very important and we think that's a lot of thought needs to given to, to be related to this. The rules or regulations and policies that inhibit or encourage participation. I use there some kind of regulatory arbitrage. Are there taxation policies for example, which actually promote certain type of products and do not certainly encourage certain products? Do people look at taxation so much and therefore is there a tax arbitrage? So like that there are regulatory arbitrage, are there policy arbitrage between or across different asset classes or within asset classes, same asset class, across two or three different instruments? The, coming to ecosystem development, there is this entire issue about GST. You know, the spot exchange, some of you may be aware that, like in India, we have so many commodity exchanges, all these are futures exchange, we don't have a vibrant spot exchange. But the same thing is not true of the equity market. In equity market you have the cash segment which is the spot exchange, as in derivatives market, or the derivative segment. In commodities, we don't have that. Now, a lot of people say that is because of some complications related to GST. Is that so? We do not know. And if it is so, then are there, you know, are there messages that need to be taken to entities like the GST council so that a vibrant spot market develops, extreme status spot market develops? Wayrah is listed as a security instrument. Is this something, is there something, some, some potential in this? Again, will GST come in the picture? If it does, then what is the way out? In coming to physical markets, you know, development of physical markets, there is this issue of quality standards. Now, there is, you know, for some, some commodities to be tailored or to be eligible for delivery on the exchange, it needs to meet certain quality standards and those are extremely of, of very, very high quality, high standard. Now whatever is that, a lot of people say, a lot of things, these are too high for anybody to maintain. In the process, the futures contract itself, which is delivery based, shall not flourish because that standard is too high. So is that a genuine concern or something that, you know, a kind of a ranting by a kind of dissatisfied set of people, we are not aware. Yeah, spot exchange, I already told you about. Regulatory tools for monetary defeat, you know, there are so many regulatory tools and there have been lot of research going on across the way, particularly after the financial crisis of two thousand nine in ten. Certain regulatory tools which we already had in India were not there in several jurisdictions, including rivers. Things like pollution limits and the price range, then the eligibility norms of participants who want to come in, the kind of penalties they have. Now, there is so much of activity going on globally on this. You know, in India, we already have some of this limits, but sometimes a lot of people say that these are too tight. And in a situation where we are talking of global markets and integration of the Indian market with the global market with the global markets, one does not know whether, you know, these two types, quote unquote, you know, regulatory tools are actually inhibiting foreign participation, for example, on our integration to the global markets. Very often we will find people here tell you that, you know, India is the largest consumer of gold, largest importer of gold, yet the gold price is set somewhere outside India, in London. Why is that? Why can't we have, we in India are the largest consumers of gold, largest demanders of gold? We have the largest stock of gold, why I estimate it is about thirty thousand tons of gold is lying just under our pillows, that's what people say, or in temple trusts. And yet the price formation of gold is taken by somewhere else. That's because in India, we do not have certain kinds of trading infrastructure, various infrastructure with the regulatory rules. Again, that is an opinion of certain type of people. We need to research and find out whether that is true and inform policy, that is again very important, inform policy because. Compliancees, reporting and disclosures, how strict are they, how educated are they? Both things need to be understood and, you know, researched on. The risk management of MIA's market infrastructure institution like exchanges and depositives. The risk management system like margining, the collateral management practices, these are, again, there are a lot and lot of research going on at the global level and there are, there is this organization called International Organization for Securities Commission or ISCO. It itself is a half of research for this type of mechanisms for risk management. And a lot of these things are happening at the global level. We need to, you know, take leaf out of that and see up to what extent and how much of that is applicable to India and do we, are we operating in an ecosystem of our own which requires us to have our own set of own self-regulations, our own system of risk management practices and principles which normally we should not be, you know, borrowing from other jurisdictions? Is that so? We do not know. Then again, there are these impact assessments and a lot of our studies that we do in MCX is on impact assessment studies. Mr. Russell class, I already told you. And then there is this, everything about the history of this market. It's a fascinating history of this, of this commodity derivatives market, but pre nineteen forty-seven. Then there are all these things about micro, market macro structures issues. For example, the spot and futures market linkages, the volatility spillovers from the futures to the spot of spot to future, are they happening? How often they are happening, how well they are happening? The price making, the process of price making, how well it is, how efficient it is? How well are the integration of the markets? And how much is the comparison across different asset classes etcetera? The cost of transacting, I would say, not even cost of transaction. Cost of transaction of course is the, the cost, the direct cost. And then there is this cost of transacting, which includes things like the impact cost or the, you know, search cost and so on. So we need to know whether these are high and if they are high, what need to be done for enticing the, you know, participation of more and more possible stakeholders, more and more potential investors in this market. Then we want innovations in trading and clearing processes. Since two thousand eighteen, clearing has been hyped off from the exchange functions and every exchange has a separate clearing corporation. And clearing itself is an area of study, efficient clearing, just like efficient trading. A lot of innovations probably is possible in the clearing side also as much as in the trading side. On the technology adoption, we have not done as much in, at least in the last two, three years as many other market segments have done in terms of adoption of AI, value blockchain etcetera in the Indian context and talk about. Are there consultants in the world and if they are, can we take them, can we adopt them? We need to know. In the exchange or the clearing corporation processes, in the ecosystem services, like in Wayrah, many people say there is a lot of potential for application of blockchain. We don't know where we can put it and how it will be beneficial for an exchange or the ecosystem, the commodity ecosystem. So some instances, I will, I will just conclude with one or two instances to tell where we have applied these in the studies and the research that MCX has done recently. I'll just give two examples. On market efficiency, of course, there are this, the well-established thing about, you know, hedging efficiency, which is done by WELAS, we just regress the spot on the futures price and, you know, the, the beta that comes out of it is the hedge ratio. It's usually called the hedge ratio. The closer it is to one, the better is the market perception. And there are many other measures of hedging of this, this is actually quite old and now because it is crude. And now there are these other measures also that people have come up with. For example, the information leadership index. So these are, you know, just to tell you about the ILS, sorry, ILI, which is information leadership index. The multiple price series corresponding to the same underlying is the most efficient series, which moves fast. That means in terms of speed, the one that takes the information earliest is called, is, you know, scoring, is supposed to be scoring high on the ILI, the information leaders index. And it is supposed to be incorporating new information before anybody else does, before other price indicators. So it is an indicator of the speed of information absorption. So that also is a measure of efficiency of other futures market. Another one that's, you know, somebody has used recently is the social loss of X, SLI. As against the speed, it is how much, how much of the information a price series is absorbing and reflecting, getting reflected. So it is actually a measure of error and the error is measured by SLI and the higher the SLI, more is the inefficiency. So we want to have less SLI and typically it tells us the SLI should be less than three. Another is something that a lot of us have been talking about in recent times is about the suspension of contract, you might be aware, some of you, that the government had, I took December twenty twenty-one, actually July twenty twenty-one first and then in December twenty twenty-one suspended a number of futures contracts and right now they are not available for trading because the government has not, I mean, disallowed. The permission has been removed. Again, what has been the impact of these interventions? There have been some studies that have been done in recent times and some of the tools that some of they have, some of these researchers have used is in wanting of course comparison in the PL group. So you analyze the return volatility etcetera between the suspended commodities versus the non-suspended commodities. So one of these studies actually, you know, if you can see that graph here. So they have taken, you know, three kind of price series. The international prices, non-suspended commodities traded in India and the suspended commodities. And the vertical line that you see in somewhere in between is the day of suspension. So how have prices moved of that particular, I think this is palm oil, both the graphs are palm oil. The left graph shows returns and the right graph shows volatility. So how have they performed vis-à-vis, in the period post the suspension, vis-à-vis the period before the suspension? So comparing with international commodity, the non-suspended set of commodity and of course the suspended commodities. So they, like that, they have done for several commodities which have been suspended. Another is difference in differences, I think, so many of you may be aware. So that is also has been adopted, has the, to find out whether the difference in volatility between suspended commodities as a group and the PL group. Again, PL two gives something that, a group of commodities that has not been suspended. Has there been a decline in volatility when using the DID method? So some studies, I think most of these are impact assessment studies that have been done in recent past So, uh, some studies, uh, I think most of these are impact assessment studies that have been done in recent past. Uh, with the support of M C X, but absolutely, uh, you know, on an objective and unbiased way, these people have done and say so, only provided the data and any other information that they needed. And some of these are over here and there are many, many more. Uh, so I leave this, uh, you know, if you get, finishing my presentation, I don't know whether it can more time than allotted to me, with a little appeal to the research colleagues over here to look at commodity markets. And consider to wait researching any or, you know, mid devil many other fields that you could probably focus on. And we at M C X are always ready to support you, you know, whatever problem for doing this research. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Uh, thanks, Dr. Day, I now, the, I saw a little bit of, please, maybe two, three questions that you can allow.
Yeah, anybody, please do. Okay, let me start, a very simple question, because I am totally illiterate here. So, uh, sometimes it's explained that this kind of markets actually destabilize the market, at least volume increase. And some arguments, others say it leads to more stability, by this I mean. What is the empirical evidence of India markets? So I think empirical evidence is, I mean, in the earlier days, empirical evidence was kind of mixed. Uh, including some studies done by, uh, you know, those famous Abhijit Singh committee. They have also tried to find, you know, find whether, what is, what is it? And they could not conclude on anything. So that's actually quite interesting if, if it is like so, but off late uh, in at least the non-ecological commodities where, you know, there is some kind of a concentration in India. Uh, this is not, I mean, instability or destabilizing of the market is something that is not really common. In fact, it is the, the way of. But again, I would urge people to do, you know, still do some research and find out whether that is true or not. We have, we have a completely open mind to, you know, accept whatever are the result or the, the research findings.
I'd like to ask you about this comparison with P R group that you mentioned after some restriction is imposed on palm oil, you know, some, some.
Yeah.
Uh, you're saying P R group is other commodities, commodities other than palm oil. But this, you need to take some sort of a weighted average of those so that three, three restrictions, they sort of mirror the difference of the palm oil.
Yes, so, yeah, so, I mean, I, very simplistic, we, I did a much time in a very simplistic manner, I showed you the law. Uh, there have been, and the way that P R group has been taken, of course, is so that it is representative of what the researcher is wanting to find out. Yeah, so that way, that has been, in fact, there have been more than one or two studies on this and all these studies are actually compared with the P R group. Different studies have taken this P R group differently. Uh, however, they, the objective was saying that if, if commodity A is comparable to commodity B C D and some of them have taken them individually, some of them have taken an index of B C D. Then after this one event which is of intervention in the form of, you know, overnight restriction. Have, you know, this was stopped, but have they behaved, I mean, behaved any abnormality? Were they behaving abnormally earlier? And what, have they, have the behavior of the B C D commodities been different after this? So yeah, different people have taken different, this one, and for one time I could not explain to you, it's, it's a it's available on a website, sir, and I mean, you know, those studies can be referred to. Any other question? No, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello. Hello, you are with me?
Yeah. Okay, well, I think uh, commodity market is very important in the first. See, about fifty percent of our people depend on agriculture. And there is also a lot of these primary products, metals, etcetera. And say the price is a signal which inform the people as to what to produce, what to sell. And how to, how to go about this management as he has covered this category. So we, yeah, we can ask for the price story part, so it's something. But what we see in real practice is that, say, particularly for certain items like vegetable onions, etcetera. Uh, prices fall at times and it, it goes much below the production cost of prices. That means we do not have the kind of a infrastructure, etcetera, to even out the demand and supply and as a result of which I think the producers, uh, producers suffer. Now, this market infirmity because of the kind of a, uh, the kind of a supply network that we have. Uh, can you please actually tell us what are the, what are the basic challenges of managing this kind of perishable commodities?
Yeah, so, thank you for this question. So firstly, uh, the market that I come from, the futures market, the derivative market, it does not have any futures on perishable. Because for many of these commodities, we need to have delivery and delivery of perishable commodities. And in terms of storage and delivery is rather impossible. So we do not have this, however, to the extent that we can, for example, I'll take, I'll give this example of potatoes. Now, till the, you know, the mass spread of cold storages in for potatoes were developed. Which again was with a lot of support from the government because there was this capital subsidy scheme of, of setting up of storage. Uh, before that, you know, I would have said we can't have futures market for potatoes because we don't have this potato. Uh, futures, we don't have, we can't store potatoes beyond a particular number of days. Uh, but then now that we have a potato storage and we, therefore, you know, there was this possibility of potato futures to be set up. And M C X was about four sixty years to have a potato future, which was going really well. But for some reason, for some market, uh, reasons regarding some manipulation in the markets, etcetera, it had to be closed down. However, uh, that showed a light that you can have, uh, you know, a futures market. And when the futures market was going on, what was happening was the farmers or the producers used to deliver on the exchange accredited warehouse. So they actually accredited, uh, put a, uh, cold storages. And keep their position simultaneously, take a position in the futures market and therefore lock in a price. And two months, three months, four months later, to the extent that they could keep and the, you know, cold storages also were, you know, were also supporting in this. Uh, you know, they could keep on, hold on to that till the time they found that, okay, now the price has stabilized. And now it is the right time for me to sell in the market, they could keep it and the futures market was in a political to that. So, uh, another example of this is, uh, in U S, they could not have oranges. Like because orange is very, very perishable. So what they did was they, you know, started having a futures market on orange juice. Because orange juice is storable, orange juice made of vegetable. So and then U S did have for many, many years a very vibrant marketing oranges, orange juice. And the ultimate beneficiary is where the people who make oranges, because it is from oranges that orange juice is prepared and then stored. So all of this infrastructure, if it is available, then the market mechanism is there to support the, you know, people who produce this and sell this in the market. Who takes initiative for developing this infrastructure? So if, we are, we are, we don't say that the government should do. But obviously, the government should provide an enabling environment for setting up this. So, uh, in, in the context of agricultural commodities, a lot of these commodities which have been suspended. Uh, you know, it is, I mean, it, it is not giving a very good name to the entire ecosystem of this, this very commodities. We are not just talking of futures, we are talking of the, you know, the physical market, the, the price taking mechanism, the referencing that has to happen. The fact that people used to actually store in certain accredited warehouses of these exchanges. All of this have got affected because the suspension until there for the last three years. So that enabling environment has not been there and therefore the ecosystem has not been. I think, yeah.
Yeah. I thought I'll ask something. Since you are from the finance area and you are aware that there is something that every share has a beta. Which is the relationship that share has vis a vis the Sensex. For each one percent increase in Sensex, what will be the increase in the share price? And, uh, there are studies which use this information to find an event like the annual report coming or any news about the company. Uh, how much abnormal returns are there vis a vis that. I was just wondering, isn't there a beta also in the commodity market? Because there are also investors out there. They can, they are waiting for one day to believe they are selling because in a day, there is a particular return they are expecting. If this return is different in different commodities, should it be, why should it be? Because as an investor, I, I can always allocate my funds between different commodities. So that my earning each day must be saved across commodities. And since now that mutual funds are into this, if the mutual funds prices, they are being quoted. Then the mutual fund prices could be taken as an index similar to Sensex to see each commodity like palm oil. What happened to palm oil, uh, uh, price, the derivative price? Vis a vis, the index of the mutual funds who, who have invested into the market. It's a very similar concept of beta here and I wonder if it can be, and I would like to know your reaction. Is it, or beta makes no sense here or what?
Very interesting question, I think we would like to, I think we would like to. Yeah, uh, so, you know, you are right, actually, we don't talk of beta much in the context of commodities. Uh, firstly, you know, unlike the equity market, we don't have, you know, an index that everybody sees as a benchmark. And then everything is a, is a kind of a measure against that index. Because, you know, gold is, is very different from wheat, which is very different from palm oil, which is very different from crude oil and so on. Every single commodity is an asset class almost by itself. And they move according to their respective dynamics and one cannot be compared to the other. Yes, there are commodities which are more volatile generally, have been in the past, that doesn't mean they will be in the future. Which gives probably more, a crude oil for example, which could give more opportunities for a short-term trade. Or, uh, I mean, it's, it's a high risk, high return kind of a situation we are talking about in the short term. Compared to let's say something like copper, which is not very volatile, which has not been very, very volatile in the past. So like that, every single commodity has to be seeing itself. And I don't think we have one single index or one single benchmark to which, you know, everything is measured and it will, can it, has it beaten that? Has it not beaten that and so on? That is not a very appropriate thing to do because of the fact that all are very, very different. Very interesting, but. And also, one more point is that commodities, if you just look at the returns in absolute percentage. Probably you will not find commodities giving very good returns in any time period that you see. The U S D of commodities as an asset class is the fact that it brings diversification benefits, the inflation has benefits. And therefore, if you were to take another measure to look at your portfolio, namely risk-weighted returns. Then probably you will find that commodities has definitely a risk in the portfolio.
I think, I think, I appreciate this question is very interesting. I say in the portfolio choice and the arbitrage possibilities, both, both these figures are very interesting. And as you said, that every commodity has a kind of a different, etcetera, etcetera. That makes it much more interesting from the portfolio point of view, management point of view. Those who are interested into that kind of a portfolio and the risk has to be distributed in a particular way uh, to get a maximization of the car. I think that's, that's the further idea of research for the, the research. Thank you so much, I think, Dr. Day, you have got one definitely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir, thank you for your lightning and a very brief and crisp presentation. Now I request, uh, Dr. Sanjeev Kumar Marji, uh, who is a professor, Department of Economics, from the local organizing committee to kindly come on stage for the felicitation of Dr. Devajit. Thank you, sir.